Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this September 26th special meeting here to discuss the G1 to order. This is specifically for one item and one item only. It is a roundtable informal discussion, so I do want to set some ground rules that though it is informal and roundtable collaborative, we should try and maintain order in the way in which we speak and how we speak, so we can keep track of recommendations or suggestions. Before getting into the ordinance, I do want to say that factors we should consider are some impacts such as the geographic impact that we have on this ordinance and how it affects our community geographically, how it could affect different populations within the community, make sure that there are some socioeconomic safeguards in place if necessary, and I'll get into more of that later, as well as this being a bigger picture conversation and not based on one or two business entities in the community. So with that, as it stands, the original G1 license, as it's written, I think we've read this time and time again to exhaustion, but the Class G1 license shall authorize a license holder of a Class A1, Class A2, Class A3, or D in good standing to file a request for video gaming terminal operator and video gaming terminal business license applications. If applying and receiving this Class G1, the business operator will not place signs, posters, pictures, or any wording on the windows or doors of the establishment mentioning video gaming which exceeds 10% of the existing signage. They will also not place on the outside walls or roof of the establishment or shopping area any video gaming wording or pictures. In addition, a partition wall inside the establishment will be created for the video gaming area consisting of a four-foot solid and permanent, excuse me, permanent stable material such as wood paneling or finished or painted drywall visual barrier for the lower half or lattice or design blocks of the upper half. The establishment must have at least one grill, in this case, gas or electric. By each video gaming machine, there must be a table, cabinet, or shelf, so drinks and food are not placed on the floor or on the machine. That's how it currently stands. That's how our current applicants have gone through and applied for this ordinance. And now it's been roughly a year, little less, since it's been out there, and I think it's a good opportunity to reevaluate what we may have missed or what we can incorporate to make this more beneficial for the community, or again, like I mentioned, incorporate additional safeguards, so our community does not get taken advantage of. With that, I'd like to open the floor for initial conversations, comments, or discussions on this ordinance. Alderman Sanoyka.
I would like to begin with a bigger picture question because it seems like, although Alderman Diasus and Alderman Cannon are not here today, I feel as though many council members are split on whether we are comfortable as a council with gaming cafes in the city of Rolling Meadows, and I would like to hear what other Aldermen, how Aldermen fall on that particular question.
Personally, I'm fine if it does move forward strictly gaming. I'd like to see a limit placed on it, either strictly a limit on gaming cafes or overall, if it's truly a restaurant or other establishment, some type of cap. But I don't have any problems with an actual gaming cafe, as long as there's a cap on them overall.
Further sentiment on that issue?
I'm not necessarily in favor of the gaming cafes. Maybe I'm just leery of, how do I say it? Our city, you know, it goes to things like city image and things like that. I mean, a cap of some sort could control that type of a thing. I worry about, especially if there's some that are very close in proximity to each other, I worry about, especially if a lot of them are primarily bars with the gaming, that we could wind up with increase in crime rate and that. I'd be interested to hear what the police chief would say about that. We've had, given that these are smaller establishments, I'm not sure that that would happen. I know we've had larger establishments, you know, nightclub-type places that were just sucking our ability for our police to police the city. I mean, they were there every night. So I just worry about the slippery slope a little bit, that's all. I mean, I'm not opposed totally to it if we, you know, do kind of like what we've done with other ordinances and really be very clear and not vague in what is required, but kind of my feelings on it.
Well, I appreciate you bringing up the question from a bigger picture perspective, and I do understand your position, Alderman O'Brien, on having a cap, whether it's on restaurants or gaming cafes or parlors. I think that economics in and of itself would tend to generate a natural market equilibrium based on the amount of patrons, again, those patrons coming from our community specifically or from neighboring communities. If the community and the patrons can only bear fictitious numbers, 10 parlors, and 14 open up, four of them will naturally go out of business potentially, right? So I think that they would cap themselves based on the draw and the appeal, and I know that, you know, this type of demographic does tend to bounce from location to location to try their hand or to try different machines, but I do think that there would be a natural cap.
That's fair.
And the other, the other thing that I, correct me if I'm wrong, do we already have a cap on number of liquor licenses? Because they got to have the liquor license to begin with.
So in the city of Rolling Meadows right now, there are no caps. It's open or closed. So again, the council decides to open a liquor license, they have an ordinance, and then typically if that business goes out of business, so restaurant and whatever it's going to be that has liquor license, staff comes back to the city council to bring that number down. So when you look at our ordinance, that's why each time we're either increasing or decreasing, but we do not have a cap, but we do not have anything that's open. It has to be open and approved.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
And I think too, from talking to some of the people in the industry, is that proximity's not necessarily a problem, is that by looking at some of the research from the state and things like that and talking to some of the owner establishments, is generally they'll feed off of one each other, is my understanding, is that if somebody's machines are full, they'll make a recommendation, hey, go down the block, a half a block, or go down the street a half a mile or whatever it is, that it actually helps both establishments. And from the research I've been able to do, hearing that, I always like to go back to facts, not that I don't trust or believe the people in the industry, going back to the state gaming websites and things like that, it does show that they don't detract business from each other, they actually attract and help each other. Is if somebody's five machines are full, they can say, hey, check the one down the street, and both actually seem to profit from being in somewhat proximity.
So that's nice that the data indicates that they're complementary.
Yes.
You know, the spirit again of having a G1 here was to bring patrons into the establishment for what the primary function was, which was dining in the original case. Now, if there's a natural need for evolution and there's other enterprise in the community that could benefit from video gaming, this is the time to explore that and see if we as a council need to open that up in the community, or if we should again put mechanisms in to safeguard against that in certain areas. And early on, the Economic Development Committee had some concerns, again, as listed in the previous September 17th committee of the whole regarding having video gaming in liquor stores because they had a liquor license, or in a gas station because they too qualified via liquor license, and that's where some of those mechanisms regarding what type of kitchen equipment should be put in place. And again, if we want to tie this all together, you know, gaming parlors, cafes, restaurants, et cetera, they do come and go, right? And so whether it's a gaming cafe or it's a restaurant in and of itself, if we are going to see any one of them come into our community, we want to make sure that they have some long-term investment in mind, and not just to come in, test the waters, if the market's good, they stay, if not, they close up shop in 14 months. And here, we've just exhausted staff going through the process of permits, applications, inspections, tied up our resources for a short-term stint. And so this is where I would like to focus on some of the language that can protect the community with that, with new establishments coming in, and then after we've completed that, potentially move back to our pre-existing establishments and what those are and what qualifies. Is it specifically restaurants? Or should it be, for example, anecdotally, I was at Havana Cigar House yesterday picking up cigars for some gifts, and they had mentioned that they had reached out to the previous mayor and had gotten no response, but they would like to have video games in their establishment. And now this is a place where the patrons sit for hours, smoking cigars, watching golf, baseball, or whatever sports they're into, and they would very much appreciate games. But again, since the state has a tie to liquor, one of the qualifiers would have to be that this enterprise has a liquor license, and then make modifications to suit whatever we as a city require, which is then to be a restaurant or have a kitchen, right? And so is this something that we should explore now that we've opened this up within our community? Any thoughts on that?
I think that was very well said. I agree if it goes, this is, I think, where Laura's question comes from, if we're in agreement that the intent for our community of the G1 license was to have another source of revenue for our restaurants, our eating establishments, then I would say we're not necessarily, and if that was the exclusive reason, I would say gambling cafes, we would want to make whatever changes not to have gambling cafes. If we want to have places, say, you're the Havana cigar or the, any bar in town, then I say, you know, we have the cafes and we put language in there on what's required there. I mean, I don't want to necessarily go down to a G1 and a G2 type of thing. I mean, I don't want to muddy it more, I'd like to keep it simple, but that's kind of what I'm thinking. To me, the other thought was, and I'm not accusing anybody of this, but I don't want us to just say, yeah, you know, let's do all the gambling cafes, it's a revenue source, let's get the money, do it for the money. I don't want that to go down that road. It's not about the money, it's about the businesses that would benefit from having the machines.
Yeah, the implementation of the G1. Alderman, it's easy, I know you have your hand up.
So to answer Alderman Sanoyka's question, I'm opposed to the gaming cafes. However, whether they claim they're gaming cafes, we have two already in town. So I would propose that putting a cap on them, a limit of how many licenses, and a way to monitor if they are actually gaming cafes, is what my original proposal was, is if their food and beverage does not generate more sales tax than their gaming, then they are considered a gaming cafe. And once they have reached that tier, or however we want to name it, then in the two establishments or multiple establishments that we may have have reached that, and they would be the first ones until we issue new licenses of gaming cafes, they would be the only ones that would get that license, considered a gaming cafe, if that makes sense.
Alderman O'Brien.
I guess my concern on that is, because I was thinking about that, because I know that recommendation last time, and I was actually thinking more towards that after the last meeting we talked on that. My concern is how much staff time would be tied up on that? And would we go back to vacant lots? Is that if they aren't hitting that ratio, do we pull their license for the month of July? And then if they're, obviously naturally, if they stop gaming for the month of July, their food sales are going to go back up. So then do we reinstitute it in August? And do we run the risk of more vacant spots coming in? Not that we just want gaming cafes in to fill vacant spots, but does it come to that balance, is how much staff time's tied up if we do it monthly, quarterly, and that it's, or they're going to raise their prices and food to make up for the lapse in gaming revenue? So then it's going to be outpriced, which is going to put customers away, which might lead to a company pulling out altogether.
I guess it goes back to the pretense in which the establishment came in. Right. For example, establishment came in touting their restaurant and that they will have video gaming. However, when the numbers come back, if it demonstrates otherwise, then I believe that their license should be pulled. I don't know what the duration is, if it should be pulled indefinitely, but they came in under false pretense to a certain degree, and, you know, there should be some sort of repercussion as a result of that. Alderman, Vessesi.
I would think it would be dangerous to put, say that a majority of it needs to be food and beverage, and here's why. There's a couple of thoughts I have. One, it's, if I were the business owner and that was a rule, and there was a risk that I would have to turn, I mean, if they have to not use the machines, that means putting a sign on the outside of the door saying, hey, our machines are not working, and they can make it say whatever they want, we've turned off our machines because the city told us to. That's what I would put on there. The other thing is they would also still have expenses for those machines, that they would be getting absolutely no revenue while they're having to pay those expenses. I mean, they still rent these machines, they still have other costs around these machines. So, hey, great, you did really good, now you can turn it off for the next, the rest of the month, and, I mean, they're renting stuff for part-time use.
Alderman Sanoyka.
So to contextualize a little bit about what Alderman Vessesi is saying, I want to state that if the purpose is to be a restaurant and not a gaming cafe, which is what we're talking about, then the expectation is that most of the revenues are coming from food and beverage, because it's a restaurant with the supplement of video gaming terminals. I think that using revenue as a means to identify what we consider a gaming cafe versus a restaurant is probably one of the most objective measures that we can use. Earlier, we were discussing, Alderman Vessesi was discussing the aesthetic of why he would not want to see a gaming cafe. He was talking about the view of the city, the feel of the city, and that's very hard for us to put into an ordinance.
An extremely subjective, as to your point, but as a metric of determining what the revenues are and getting solid feedback from both the municipality and the state, it's a demonstrator of what this entity came into the community, either validating that they are a restaurant, or that it was false pretense. And if there is false pretense, there has to be some ownership and accountability to that as well. Alderman Budmats.
Yeah, I wanted to politely disagree with your remarks. I mean, the, when we originally passed this, it was passed to help the restaurants that were existing in town that stated that they had difficulty competing with restaurants in other municipalities that had this available. So it wasn't about creating gaming cafes, it was about giving the existing restaurants in town the opportunity to be, remain competitive at their primary business, which is selling food and drink. And so I don't really have a problem with turning off somebody's machine. The Daisy's Cafes fellows who came here said that they're first and foremost a restaurant, built on a gaming model, I think was how they phrased it. I remember seeing the proposed menu for Isabella's, and it was varied and wide, and it was the kind of things that you serve at a sit-down restaurant. And I recall when we originally talked about this, like, can we specify that they have waitresses? Can we specify that there's table service? How are we going to accomplish this goal so that it does what it wants to do? And so I don't have a problem, we didn't advertise or look for gaming cafes when this was passed originally, and so if a gaming cafe has come in and is a wolf in sheep's clothing and covered themselves with the restaurant clothing, but they're really a gaming cafe, then, then as Alderman, or as Mayor Gallo says, sorry, as Mayor says, it seems to be false pretenses. So I don't have any problems with pulling those licenses, because we are here to help our restaurants. There was a clamoring for restaurants amongst residents, they wanted a place to eat. I mean, when reps opened, it was a restaurant, it was a huge deal, I mean, so I really don't have a hard time with that. If gaming cafes are looking for a place to move in, I would have originally voted against gaming cafes, I would vote against gaming cafes now. So I don't, I really haven't changed my original stance when we voted this in, it was for helping our restaurants. And so if we're going to help restaurants, we'll tell them. And if they're really restaurants, it'll be borne out in their receipts.
And as I said originally, I share your opinion with regards to gaming cafes, and I'm very much in agreement to what I was told the original intent was, was for a restaurant to have a secondary source of revenue to help be competitive. It's not the way the ordinance was written, but from what I hear, that's the intent. So if, at the end of this, what would make me the happiest is if we looked at the ordinance that we have written, and, well, first, let's get a consensus on her question, do we want cafes or not? The answer is no, then let's address the ordinance and take the things out that permit it, because right now, they're permitted.
Alderman O'Brien.
I was just going to say, the only reason, and having the opportunity to talk with Tim and Todd and the gentleman here and things like that, they can take that over 21 off the door tomorrow. Is talking to them, the only reason they're doing it is because of how their establishment is set up, is they have the washrooms in the back, just based on the building design, and they did not want to take any chances of, they could right now, based on a gaming law, my understanding, a minor, meaning under 21, could be in there, could walk through the gaming floor to the washrooms. They don't want to take that risk, just based on the type of business they run, and they seem like very stand-up gentlemen, is that just for that 10 or 12-foot section, that's the only reason they have 21 on their door, they could pull that tomorrow. And then they would just, I mean, they'd have to obviously make sure, they always have staff there, but in that 12 to 15-foot gaming section, that's the only reason Tim and Todd and Daisy's have that 21 sign on their door, is they did not, out of their own conscience, want to do that, because there's eyes in the sky and game, obviously everybody understands the gaming thing, and it's mine or by the state, but it is the control, that was a safeguard they put in place for that 12 to 15-foot gaming section. They could pull it off tomorrow if they wanted to.
Understandable, but if we're going to focus on one individual business right now, we also should keep in mind that on certain nights that the kitchen closes, but patrons are still there, so they're no longer even dining, they're just there to utilize the gaming system.
I didn't realize their flat-top closed.
Yeah, so the.
I've never been in there where it's been closed.
The cook lives next door to me, and he gets sent home on certain nights because there's nobody.
Because I've actually heard the opposite, that is, that people will go there after the other kitchen shut down, because they have that flat-top grill and they cook food longer. So I've heard different information.
I'm not saying it's a regular occurrence, but it happens. And then, of course, now, is it a restaurant if the cooks are sent home? Or is it a gaming parlor that serves drinks? Alderman, it's easy on.
So to kind of go with what Alderman Vessesi said, is if we were to pull a license for gaming, be it what we determine, I would implore those businesses to put as much marketing into their establishments for food and beverage as they do for their slots, so that they can gain back their slot license, because they spend a lot of money on marketing for their slot machines. That would be my answer to that. So if we turn their slot machines off, because they are not meeting our revenue, or hopefully what I hope we do is for a revenue generation of meeting our goals of not having gambling over their food and beverage, then they should be able to market for their food and beverage.
I might look to council on this. How would that affect businesses in place now? That opened a business in Rolling Meadows prior to this potential revenue share, I'm 100% against the split, staff time and everything like that. But how would that go? Because I know we've got two or three. Because I know we've got two or three influx, we've already got the six established ones or the five. How does that go? They came in to do business under one situation, and now we're changing it midway through.
Well, Steph would have to analyze that. Also, Barry, maybe you could help me with the length of a license, once it's been tendered, so...
So, our G1, our G1 is actually a calendar year. So, if, and again, just putting back all the chips on the table, so technically, an individual comes to us, they get their liquor license, and then obviously, they could be the A1, A2, A3, or the D. Then when they come back and they're ready, and they have the room set up, depending on the walls, then they come back to the city council for the G1. So, they have to have two licenses. The G1 has three different applications to it. The first one, obviously, is going to the business, that's $120 calendar year, but it's prorated, so hypothetically, depending on when they come in, it could be $60 if they're doing that June, but, or July, I should say. But then, the second application is $1,000 for the video gaming terminal operator, and then it's $1,000 for every machine. Then, once the state actually activates those machines, that's when the gaming revenue comes into the city of Rolling Meadows, and typically, it's a month, obviously, after it's ended. So, there's four different sources, but again, we run it calendar year. And everything expires December 31st, with the January 1st starting.
And every renewal is the same process over again?
Every renewal goes through the process that they have to comply with, they're showing that they're active with the Illinois State Gaming Board, that they have their current inactive liquor license, the only problem with that is that liquor license are whenever they get them, so sometimes there's a little differentiation on that. I would love everything to be simple, but that's coming down later. But again, it all goes back into if everything is in good standing. And then, because obviously, the first one, the first gaming establishment will now be coming up, obviously, with their liquor license, and obviously, for 2020 will be really the renewal for everything. The one establishment that started in November of 2018, they did go through a renewal with everything else going on. But again, there was a site visit, to make sure that they were still in compliance with having tables in there and everything else. So, there are eyes that go out before it comes to the city council. But once they have that G1 approval, then it actually comes back to the city council.
So, I would have to do some research regarding the impact of that, and whether a license would need to be, you know, we'd have to go through a rescinding process.
Right, that's Mike, and then?
To answer you, though, nobody, all the licenses that we've voted on were for restaurants who came to us asking. So, nobody's come to us saying, we're a gaming cafe and we would like to have a G1 license. Nobody's been that honest or straightforward. So, I'm understanding that there are some in the hopper, but we haven't ever voted on a gaming cafe as a council. So, and each individual license is voted on, so at this point, we have not established a license for gaming cafes, I mean, we've established a license for restaurants. I mean, the fellows from Big B's came up and they showed us their menu. First thing they did was show us their menu, and we're a restaurant, and we serve food. And so...
Which is being enhanced, I believe, based on the...
Right, based on their desire to have gaming there, they've enhanced the restaurant portion of their business. So, I guess what I'm saying is, nobody's come to us and said, yeah, we're a gaming cafe, and we just want to sell our gambling here.
So, Alderman Bud Matts, that's a good segue, because I know we can go round robin all night on this conversation, but taking it from the bigger picture question about, you know, what does the city council want to see the city do with what type of business come in, I would like to move a little bit deeper, to actually focusing on new business coming in, and what the criteria is, or what safeguards and mechanisms should we put in place to have the entity demonstrate that they're in it for a long-term, or at least a significant investment in the community? And what other areas do we need to consider when new businesses are coming in? So, if we can kind of change how we're looking at this, and what we want to include for that criteria?
I think, with all due respect on that, have we answered the question regarding, do we want cafes or not? Because without answering that question, how do we identify what we want and don't want as far as new businesses? Yes, we vote on each one, but it's going to be pretty much up to each, each ten that come up, it could be, I mean, it could be seen as very arbitrary, on whether we're passing it or not, we're letting them have their license or not letting them have their license, when we're voting on every one of them. I would like to see it very detailed, as far as you meet this criteria, you can get your G1.
Manager Crumstock, go ahead, and then Alderman Bud Matts to follow.
I just would make the comment, I think that Alderman Vassessi, I think what Mayor Gallo, not putting words in his, I think he's trying to say, the six that are in place, we know what they are right now. Anything that's coming in, again, there are three that are in development, and one's getting closer and closer, but I think what he's trying to say is, the ones that are here now, put off to the side. They are going to be, I'm not putting words into your thing, are going to be grandfathered. Starting, whenever new ordinance is, what are you looking for? And if it's a restaurant, what are the parameters? And it goes back to, potentially, not putting words into people's mind, maybe utilizing what Alderman Diastis used, what are the criteria? But I think that's what Mayor Gallo is saying, cut that other discussion, start fresh with starting this, anybody who comes to approach the city after the six plus three, if you want to put it in there. And I think that's what you're trying to say, so...
That's also what I'm saying is...
But I think that's what we're trying to say, so...
Is, but I...
So, to Manager Crumstock's point, it is, let's move past the current entities that are here and talk about just the...
The people that are here are here. All I'm concerned about, frankly, is not the ones in the hopper, not the ones that are already done, it's anybody new that comes in.
Well, even the hopper, I mean, because they haven't been brought to the dining yet.
Depending on how far along they are. The thing, the point I was trying to make is, until, how can we go in and detail out what's acceptable if we haven't made a decision on whether or not we want internet cafes?
Or gaming cafes, with internet, maybe.
What I'm saying is, let's say we want, I'll give you an example. Let's say we don't want gambling houses. Personally, I would say we eliminate all A3s, that'd be my very first step, because they don't, they don't have to serve food, like, to have an A3, they don't have to sell food.
It actually says light food.
Light food, okay, well...
It says they may...
Pretzels and peanuts are light food. So, I really would like to get to a consensus on whether or not we want gambling cafes, want internet cafes.
Alderman Bud Matts?
I agree. A quick question, is, I've heard it bantered around, is this a right or a privilege? My understanding is this is a privilege, so therefore, nobody's entitled by virtue of the fact that they've put in an application, that their business has the right to this. It's a privilege that can be denied or approved at the pleasure of the city council, is that correct?
It is a privilege, that's why we don't have caps, it's open or closed, so anybody can ask for it, but the privilege is to open it or close it.
That's why the number is limited, so that only those establishments that actually have the license, that equates to the number that's allowed.
But technically, it's not even a right for renewal.
Correct, there is not a license available at this time, so there's no right.
Okay.
So, again, right now, there are six G1s out there. That's all that has been established. If one of those businesses go out of business, that's why we bring another ordinance to close it down to five. If we did not close it down, that sixth one could still be active, and someone says, I have the right to that open sixth one. That's why we do not have caps, but that's why we open or close, and that's why if someone comes to the city of Rolling Meadows and says, I want something, the privilege is to open that next item.
Thank you, thank you. And just to put some closure behind the question about whether or not the council wants video gaming parlors, I think that's a great opportunity for the aldermen to do their homework with their residents, and find out from the community, what the community wants. Do they, do your residents in your ward want to see gaming parlors, or do they not? Do they understand the difference between a gaming parlor, a gaming cafe, and a restaurant that has video games, right? So, I think it's a great opportunity for every one of the councilmen and women to find out from the community before we make that decision. Alderman O'Brien?
I was just going to say, I'm on the gaming board site now, there's not even a definition of what a gaming cafe is.
No.
So, I mean, what are we going to use as a baseline if we do move forward? So, that's the bigger question, too, is, are we saying if they slap a 21 on an older, or 18 and older on their thing, does that make it a cafe? Because there's no definition in the gaming board of what a cafe is.
So, to my understanding, a gaming parlor typically is the light food, right, and alcohol, and the light food can be pretzels and peanuts, that's a gaming parlor in its essence. Of course, there's a huge spectrum of where they could fall within there, and then there's a restaurant that serves food and has video games. Alderman Sanoyka?
So, I would like to know what this council would like to do with the G1, in the sense of how we want to stimulate economic development. So, listening to former Mayor Prenta's clarification about his support of creating a G1 license, he had stated that the purpose of encouraging restaurants or having a grill for food was to make sure that not only was there revenue that is also being taxed for the city from a gambling standpoint, or gambling revenue standpoint, and a liquor standpoint, but also for food, because we can tax both food and beverage.
So, to your point, I was hoping we would get to the economic development or stimulus when we, after we got past new business coming in, because existing business, there's a couple of different avenues that we could even open up to grandfather current establishments in. For example, there are hotels that have liquor licenses and serve food, and they dine indoors, and do we, as a community, want to see them have six video games in their lobby? Of course, you know, segmented off from their kitchen area, so that now it's like a micro casino, essentially, or a banquet hall, and it has a liquor license and serves food, and it's an added draw to their guests, should they come for a wedding, to be able to go throw some $20 bills in a video gaming device, right? And so, for economic development, and what type of stimulus? I was hoping to hold off till later, but if we want to pursue this now, that's fine, but I do want to get to new business first.
Get the first question done, as far as what do we want to do for new businesses coming in.
Okay. Alderman Sanoyka?
To that, then...
You've got to do both.
To that, then, I would say, I guess I would like further clarification from everyone here in the council as to what we would like, or from our new businesses, because if they're already going to go through a process of being a business, don't they have requirements that they have to match, anyway?
So, being a business, obviously, that they're paying their annual permit, but also that they go through annual inspections. So, if I can just take one step back.
Sorry.
So, obviously, a restaurant, and this goes back from the health inspector, there's three different levels when he's inspecting, low risk, obviously, medium risk, and high risk. A low risk is obviously an establishment that is...
Light food?
And that's my nice way of saying it. A medium would be processing where you have coolers and additional items. High risk is anything with a grill and a bar and all those kind of pieces, because there's more dynamics. So, obviously, when our health inspector, or any health inspector goes out, they're always looking at those three levels. In my mind, and everybody at this table knows that I'm not a coffee drinker, when someone says a cafe, that's coffee, tea, those kind of light drinks, and again, you can say light snacks. So, when, anytime you go for a tour and someone says, oh, this is a gaming cafe, in my mind, I know exactly what I'm walking into. When I walk into our establishments that are in here, yes, they do have grills, so that takes it in my mind off. But again, the parameters that you're looking for, I think, should be specific, and if you're looking for what kind of food it should be out there, and when staff looks at menus, they could change. And one establishment here came in with a menu, they've grown that menu, they do have a different feel. And in my mind, the six establishments, five are in very good standing, the sixth one is so new that I'll give them some time. At least three of the establishments have given back to the community, been part of the community, have given diverse menus, so they have done some of that. When you're talking about economic development, I'm sort of going through, some of the vacancies are now filled up. I think going back to either Mayor Gallo or Alderman O'Brien's conversation is, you know, let the market do what the market's going to do, but let it be healthy, because I would never want to see, as the manager, that unfortunately, we open in an area too many, and then they all fail, because there's the potential for that. Right now, where they are positioned, even with one that's under development, I think the area has enough, and that's maybe some part of the discussion of new items.
Yes.
And I would also use the caveat, going back to the September 17th discussion, it's very important that we get to that last discussion about distance, and also other liquor stores, hotels, vanquits, but also making sure where they are. So, economic development-wise, they are doing what they're supposed to be doing, another revenue change, they are filling vacancies. Again, five of the six, very diverse, and then, three of them are part of the community, given back, and you can rely on pretty much two out of those six, that when the community event foundation is asked. But again, they are doing the other thing. The one thing that I would bring up, and it was actually brought up today, in good standing, that will be the next challenge that will come in. What is that definition? Because obviously, today, I was in one establishment, that they're not following one part of it, so that would be a discussion, too.
Okay. So, one focal point for new establishments, obviously, is we have the liberty of dealing with the geography, right? So, we can put some mechanisms in place that it's so many feet away from the pre-existing establishments, or in this case, when it comes to economic development, that we, as a council, do have to be very cognizant of where these are being placed. Purely, I said this during the committee of the whole in the 17th, but purely from an observational perspective, I've noticed that a lot of these gaming establishments are situated in a place with high-density housing, in a walkable space, and some of that high density happens to be low-income housing. And we do know that there's certain statistics for demographics and participation rates for gaming or gambling. And I think we have an accountability to make sure that we don't saturate areas that are vulnerable to allowing certain demographics to just continuously dump their money in, and yes, it's great for the business, but it's bad for the community. So, it's something to think about. So, is there a geographic constraint or parameters that we want to establish? Alderman?
I'd be more one up for distance, knowing that they can feed off of each other, but I don't want three or four. But my concern is, entities invest tons and tons of dollars on where to go. So, McDonald's picked this spot for a reason. Why would we control that if these entities do their research and they want to, I mean, there's certain ethnic stores that are placed in ethnic communities? So, why would we want to dictate that, okay, so they're going across, right across in the new condos here and things like that, right across the street? So, why would we dictate? I mean, there's millions and millions of dollars that are spent of where people are going to put their business. I don't know why we would want to disrupt that.
So, there's two reasons. One is, yes, there's value and there's economic growth and value in location, 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 but there's also predation. And I don't want to open our community up to allow for predatory analytics to take control and take advantage of residents in the community, because we know it's possible. That's what I'm saying. Alderman Vassessi?
The, I would also be one to say, really, the distance. I do think that there's some... The, I would also be one to say really the distance. I do think that there's some factors though, in that, I mean, the areas that, there's limited areas where we could actually put these things. We have our strip mall, our downtown area here, we have Plum Grove Road area, and we have the Wilkie.
Gulf Algonquin.
Gulf Algonquin. Those are like the main areas. So, there's only like maybe three places where we really would allow these to be in the first place. My concern is more a saturation in any one of those areas. So, it really goes to the, so many, so many establishments within a...
Yeah, distance and density.
Yeah. So, I agree with the density. They don't, I don't want them to be too dense.
Alderman Venesiano?
Just to move it along a little, start throwing some numbers out here. What if we were to say no more than two locations in a matter of four-block radius? Just like something, like start something. Half-mile?
I was thinking, in my mind, no more than three within a half a mile. Because I know Alderman Budmats did some research last time on some other ordinances. I think, was it something within like, it was like 2,700 feet, which is the equivalent of about a half-mile?
And the municipality in question had a casino that they were trying to protect, that casino, which is also a revenue generating business within their community. So, they were trying not to damage that longstanding business and their, and their community's ability to continue on by virtue of the fact that, you know, so many would be established. So, they had a, they had an invested reason why they chose that as well.
Mayor, what I would actually say is if you were doing three in an area, that would probably be fine. And I say probably, because the three, the two that are under development, the third one that's in the building permit, would actually be in that three in the circle, and then the other one. So, what we're talking about is technically, and just putting everything on it, is that on Plum Grove Road, there would be two more, one in Squire Court and one in the other. And then there's one more being talked about in the downtown at this point in time. So, that would still fit within the three parameter. But again, I think going back, not preaching, but going back to the distance, that's number two on your September 17th. And again, do you want some of those other pieces? Or are we just going, say, distance, three in an area? But that does work with right now what's being stated.
I think it's a starting point that it's fine for now.
One, one piece of number, of number two. I think we do need to discuss the other ones, though.
Alderman Venesiano?
So, I would keep in with number two, you know, establish and maintain within 100 feet property of another one. I mean, that's there, that's reasonable. I don't think any of them are within 100 feet of each other. My opinion, a gas or charging station, I don't think that would be a problem. Running off the top of my head, the six, and why that would be an issue, that would eliminate the issue of potentially gas stations.
So, some of the concern from the economic development committee was that they don't want to see liquor stores and gas stations.
Correct. So, that would solve that dilemma of not allowing them at gas stations. If the council agrees they don't belong in gas stations, I definitely agree with, be, you know, 100 feet within a school, private school, elementary, secondary school, and then the pre-existing daycare center. So, I mean, it's there. And then, like I said, the gas station would solve the concern.
And beneath C, where it says number three, that was a formatting issue, it was supposed to be D, but has it changed from Word to PDF, bounced back out. So, that's another geographic limiter too, which is inside a liquor store, hotel, restaurant. I don't know if that should remain or go away. It's up to the council. Alderman Sanoyka?
What was the original intent of that last part D regarding a hotel restaurant?
Just to disqualify the ability for a hotel or a liquor store to obtain video game systems. That's all. And again, coming from concerns of the economic development committee, don't want to put words in the committee's mouth, but those were some fears that were brought up previously.
Are these, are these fears based, or are these concerns based in comparative research in other municipalities?
No, purely on preference, personal preference. It was voiced to me that they just don't like the idea of video gaming systems being in gas stations. They think it's...
Bad aesthetic.
Yeah.
Okay.
Poor taste. Alderman Venesiano?
I would think I would agree with that, that I would think that, and maybe I'm just overthinking this, that putting slot machines in a liquor store, that may increase our potential for crime?
There's lottery tickets. It's gambling. I mean, what's the difference?
You may not get as mad at a Lotto ticket as you do a slot machine. I'm just thinking, I'm trying to think outside the box of what maybe they were thinking. So, I would agree with including the liquor store. The hotel, my gut is saying no, don't include, you know, don't allow them either. But definitely open to everyone else's thoughts.
I would be interested in hearing from our Chamber of Commerce and their business members who are hoteliers, and what their thought, or if they're recognizing trends based on this. You know, I don't have a personal position either way. Right now, it's a sentiment of indifference. But if we're looking at economic drivers, is that something that will draw in more guests? Is it something that would create a greater incentive? I don't, I don't know. And so, I don't want to be so quick or presumptuous to cancel it. But I also don't want to look away from it because of unfounded fears that I don't have data for. Alderman Vessesi?
As far as, I think I'm pretty much in agreement with what you've been saying. A, B, C, definitely restrict. The liquor store as well. The hotel, you can make an argument both ways. Data might help, like you said, Chamber Council. But, but I'm actually thinking that, because when I think of hotel, I'm thinking of like the Holiday Inn, and they got a separate area where they got their machines. I would actually think that the hotels would potentially do a very good job with, with that. But then, when you say a hotel, now you're looking at, are we looking at, you know, what about the, you know, like a bed and breakfast, or a very small motel type of thing? Now, you're starting to get...
Well, again, the criteria goes back to liquor license, and then serving of food in the style of kitchen, right, at that point?
That's true. Your typical Red Roof Inn doesn't have a liquor license.
Sure. Alderman O'Brien?
I was gonna say, I mean, to keep things moving along, I'm in agreement with what the proposal, Alderman Venesiano, said. I think I would be leaning towards to allowing for hotels. And not that we have to follow lead by anybody, but Schaumburg just passed last evening, their hotels are included in there. Now, obviously, somewhere that's going to do a conference or convention for 500 people, the only place they could go nearby is the Renaissance, one of our locations, the Holiday Inn Express, or the New Aloft that's coming or something like that. They couldn't accommodate that type of attendance anyways. But I would agree with the liquor store and everything else. Hotel, I would probably be leaning more to let it go forward, assuming that they had a restaurant at the other criterias.
And so now, we're teetering on the subject of pre-existing establishments here. And, you know, so what's not to say that a banquet hall, we have a couple banquet halls?
I would be in support of that. I don't know why we would limit, and this is going, I know we're bouncing here, but to keep things moving along, personally, for any new establishment, I think we put hood in and we move on. I mean, because a banquet hall is gonna have a full kitchen. I know Aloft, just from personal experience, does not, but they're gonna be connected to a Holiday Inn Express, which generally, I believe, does have a full kitchen staff. So, I mean, that's just my thought. Put in hood, because it's clearly the intent. Staff I've talked to, people have gone through the permitting process, the intent is clearly the hood. So, I don't know if they got missed in the ordinance a year ago, but talking to the people that have the two or three in the pipeline, and looking through some of those places, walking through, they're clearly specked for a hood. So, regardless if it was in or not in the ordinance, my understanding is before the city issued permits, occupancy, anything like that, they had to have a hood. So, that's my thought is for newest, it's, to me, it seems pretty clear from the experience, and there's people I've been talking to in the process already in. I think it's implied that before we, as the city, would sign off on that, they had to show a hood. So, I think just to keep, for new establishments, I know we can deal with existing later, but I would think, because it's clearly implied from the half a dozen people I've talked to that are in the process or have been through it.
Alderman Budmats?
If I may, I'd like to go back to the economic model, because the primary revenue that gas stations acquire is gasoline. And so, it's really easy to determine if the primary business is selling gaming or gasoline. If it's a hotel, their primary business is selling rooms.
Hotel rooms.
So, what we can do is compare revenues that we tax, because those numbers are readily available to us. We tax gasoline, we tax, we tax food, we tax beverage, we tax hotel rooms. So, laundromats, I mean, their, their primary business is selling water and soap. But, but the deal is, is that, but there are laundromats that have gaming in some states. And so, so I think if we stick with a clean model, where that the primary, the primary mover of this business is selling food and beverage, then at that point, if we want to add hotels in, okay, then we can. We have to consider that, that would be opening it up to a Motel 6, that would be opening it up to whoever it is where their primary business is selling rooms. But by doing so, we can eliminate gas stations, we can eliminate, if that's our, if that's our goal, and it's mine, okay, is that we eliminate those businesses that we do not want to create, that we can eliminate grocery stores by, by saying that they sell food, but, and a lot of it. But their primary business is not selling cooked food. It's, and so, there are grocery stores, lots of them with gaming in different states. So, I'm just, and they also have alcohol licenses as well. So, we need to make sure that we're, it seems the cleanest and easiest way that we have of monitoring.
So, oh, I'm sorry. As a follow-up to that, then, are we, are you thought, then, Mr. Budmats, is that we do go back to some type of share, where we've got to tie up staff time? And are we gonna pull the Jules license if they don't sell more Cheerios than gaming? Like, that's what I'm like, how would we, the analytics would be there, I'm not disagreeing with you. But we're gonna tie up, if we're putting this in for every potential establishment in town, that's gonna take a heck of a lot of staff time, as well as, yeah, we can turn off the machines, and like Alderman Vessesi said, put a sign on the door, come on in for a burger, but you can't gamble. Are we gonna do, like, you can't buy gas at Marathon? Or you can't buy, is that, is that where you're going? Is that the analytics you're showing?
No, the privilege of, of gaming, okay, wouldn't be allowed. I mean, their primary business is what it is. And so, if we've decided that, that we want to help restaurants because their primary business is selling prepared food, and by allowing them to also have gaming, then if their primary business is selling food, go ahead and use that as a secondary source of revenue. However, if, if their primary source of, of revenue is gaming, now it's a gaming cafe that also happens to sell food.
Well, that's my question is, the only way to get to that point is nobody do the analytics on a monthly basis, quarterly basis, right? I mean, that's the only way we could get down to where the predominant...
The reality is, we can have the establishments submit the information, all we have to do is look at the ratio. It's not really...
If we want to tie up staff time doing that, I think that would deter businesses coming in, regardless if you're a new gas station or a new liquor store. But...
Only if they want to have gaming.
Agree, agree.
And so, currently, we have how many gaming establishments?
Six.
Six.
So, we have six that are current, the other two?
If we had 25, it's literally looking through a 25 line items to see gaming revenue, primary revenue.
Right. But the next step, then, do we shut down Marathon Gas Station? If their sales go to 55% gaming, 45% gas?
We would turn off their ability to perform gaming, because they're no longer a gaming facility, or a gas station.
So, then it goes back to Mr. Vessesi's earlier point, is they're gonna pull out because they're still paying $1,000 rent on the gaming machines that aren't getting anything. Or they're gonna jack their gas prices or Cheerio prices to compensate for the revenue, which could lead to vacancies.
If they want to maintain, you know, the intent of what they came in to do business as.
Sure. I think that's opening up a Pandora's Box.
Thank you. Alderman Vessesi?
Okay, couple, couple of things. One, I'm 100% agreement with what Mr. O'Brien said as far as new businesses, at a minimum, just add the hood. Personally, if it's, if it's about the food and all that, I, I might want to get rid of the A3 as well. But, new businesses, that's, that's it. Second, places like gas stations and some of the other places that might get this, there's other issues there in that, take a gas station, for example. I could never see, I'm putting my planning and zoning hat on here, they don't have the parking. Where are they gonna park in front of the gas, in front of the thing?
Pumps.
The pump, and then go in and gamble for a few hours? I'm sure that owner would love that.
Not to cut you off, but I need just to stop a conversation about gas stations. By state law, there's an acreage requirement that they have to have even to be eligible to get a gaming license from state of Illinois. So, I know that we're using them as an example, but I would prefer that everybody just get off gas stations. I know there's a big joke that I could say about Gasco, but I won't. But some gas stations do have food markets, and they might have a restaurant, but there's an acreage requirement that wants. Typically, it's the truck stations and the truck stops that you see, because they're larger and they have the acreage requirement. That's why they're allowed to have video gaming. So, I just wanted, we're having way too much conversations about gas stations. So, thank you for your interest.
Maybe we should bring it back to, as Mr. Budmats said, let's focus on the food part of it. We can always add anything else later on.
And keep in mind, so if a business throws 20 grand, I don't know what it costs for a hood, but let's say 40 grand. If they put 40 grand into a facility to have a hood, and then they never use it, they've met the requirements, nothing says that they have to use it, nothing says that, anything has to happen with it, other than it's there if somebody wants to buy a hamburger. And if they say they're all out of hamburgers today, and all they want to sell is gaming, there's nothing in our, in our law that prevents them from doing that. They don't have to sell a single hamburger, they don't have to sell a single steak. All they have to do is have a hood. What did that, what did that gain us? Now, we have a building with a hood in it.
I was just gonna, to me, that investment, because I've learned it's about $1,000 a square foot, is what I've, does that sound comparable, about $1,000 a square foot? To me, that shows a long-term commitment to the city. Is that they are making that investment in the city, that it's not cheap to do. You're exactly right. But that, to the earlier mention of the comments that Mayor Gallo had, that shows a commitment to the tenure of the city. Is that they're probably not gonna just throw a $30,000 or $40,000 hood in, and then they're gone unless we put in requirements where they can't recoup the money, because their gaming's more than their food sales. So, I see the investment is an investment for a long term.
Alderman Vessesi, the manager.
One other thing I was gonna, I was gonna add on there. First off, I do see your point, Alderman Budmats. But another thing I would, I would say we would want to put in there regarding, it's not a, not a, anything to do with revenue, but I believe as long as the machines are running, they should be open to sell food. So, they'll, they'll have the staff for selling food as well. They need to be open for food at the same time.
I would agree with that.
They're doing the, the machines. Or just close the whole restaurant down if they don't want to do the food right then. So, that's just a proposal.
It's a valid point to bring up, excuse me. But the enforcement, how does one enforce that?
Would it be like, oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, would it be like a nuisance complaint? Like you said the other day, a neighbor came to you and said, hey, they wanted a sandwich and the grill was closed.
Oh, no, he's the cook. He goes home, because there's nobody ordering.
So, I mean, that would be, I mean, that's the way we enforce anything. Is somebody inquiring about it? So, either chief goes out, if it's a complaint about a loud party, or I would think it's considered on a nuisance basis or on a report basis.
Manager Crumsock?
So, going back into the discussion, I know that we're now talking new. But I do want to reiterate, there is square footage cost for the hoods. The investment is also in the other. And obviously, not putting someone behind me under, but most gaming contracts with whoever the vendor is, so, sort of picking on him because he's behind me. If Bigsby signs a contract with Gold Rush, who is the vendor of record... If Bigsby signs a contract with Gold Rush, who is the vendor of record, um, it's typically between five and eight years with their contract. So there is an investment on the machines. The other thing is, I would be very cautious about looking at the food and beverage compared to gaming because it does fluctuate, but um, we do have to give due process. This goes back to the last discussion about what happens in three months, then we have to bring them into adjudication. There's more of a process that we would have to follow. So um, comments that have been saying, hey, we could just turn them off, no, we can't. There's a process that we have to follow. So my last comment, and I've been commenting all over the place, um, for this discussion is that, um, what we have right now with the six, and I know that we're past that, um, and my feeling, five out of the six, um, and again, one's very new, um, are restaurants because they do have the grill, they do have food, their numbers might be fluctuating and everything like that, um, turning off a grill, um, telling someone to go home, but they do have food. And maybe they're using some of their revenues from gaming to supplement to keep costs down on the food, but that's their decision. So again, I want to reiterate as we've been trying to get the six that are in place, and that's my understanding are going to be grandfathered. We're talking about anybody who's now new about what their requirements were, so.
Correct. And that goes back to if there need to be safeguards to preventing, um, the theoretical video game parlor from coming in, right?
For the future.
If, if we're designing this to protect ourselves, what mechanisms should we identify in advance and put in the ordinance? Alderman Beliziano.
So kind of following up with he, what city manager just said, so if it, adjudication and all of that playing into it, maybe what we need to look at is then, um, after, you know, we, we have this sales tax revenues for food and beverage for the year, we are not required to renew their license every year. Again, it's a privilege. If those numbers at the end of the year, their gambling is outweighed by their food and beverage, we are not required to renew their, their license again. They are then out their $40,000 for their hood. And I would just ask, then are we required to do anything at that point?
If they don't meet the renewal requirements, then their license wouldn't be.
Carried over.
Able to be renewed.
So that might be an alternative to it. If we can't do it every three months like we had hoped or what I had hoped, then we do it at the end of the year when it's time for renewal.
That eliminates the staff time issue of trying to be vigilant on a quarterly or monthly basis.
I was just going to say, I mean, it would reduce the staff time, but so then we, in theory, could have businesses coming in left or right. Is that they are coming here for the long term, they invest, and then they're gone 13 months later, is somebody else going to come in and try it again and they're going to be gone 13 months later? I mean, it could become a big revolving door. It does, that fixes the staff time. But I would just be concerned about this turnover. If we're going to have these stipulations where it's got to be 60% or 40%, there's no other industry that we control like that.
So if the question is to disallow video gaming parlors to come in, but then looking at the results and essentially they are, and then we just turn a blind eye to it, what's the point of any of this? And just allow a video gaming parlor to come up and approach the diocese, have been an application, say we're a video gaming cafe or parlor, we want to be here. And then we, there's no reason to go through this exercise because if we're not going to take the results of the revenues and do anything with it, then none of this is worth any time.
And I, I would probably defer if we, I believe we have two guests that are in the industry or would like to be, to ask them some questions when they come up, how they would counter that? If suddenly their revenue goes 60% gaming, if it's approved, what are you guys going to do to fix that? From the people that are opening these cafes or in, that's going to be hard to do. I know in theory we're saying they'll be grandfathered, but how you can just switch a, flip a switch on a business plan, I, I actually don't know how it would be done. And I don't know if you guys know. Right? Think, I was, we can get to that point when they speak, but you can't.
Alderman Beliziano.
So then I would implore back again, um, we're not looking, we're not looking out for one business, we're not looking out for, um, the gaming cafes, we are looking out for the community. We don't want these gaming cafes here. So if they can't meet those, those requirements, whether we decide 60, 40, then they don't belong here. And they lost their $40,000 investment and the next one comes in and they have that opportunity for the next year. I, I don't want to be point blank about it, but that's kind of how it has to be. Their model, when they came to us and said, we are a restaurant, this is what it is, then your numbers should reflect that. So they shouldn't have to turn around their business plan to prove otherwise.
And this in essence is supplemental, it's complementary to the primary business. And there's, there's no reason to make the, the transition to being the primary source of income, just inconsequential.
But if the residents support it, why would we as the local government trump that? If the residents can support, because it goes back to their earlier conversation, can three support each other within a half block mile or a half mile? If the residents will support, or like Red Apple or Reps that have been established, or Bigsby's that have been established, that have been in the city for five years or whatever you guys have been in control, or Red Apple for longer than that, we're going to have them go away just because, well, that's my concern. They're an established restaurant and if a year their margins have to be higher from gaming, we're going to tell an established business that's been here? Let's say it's a, it's a new one, but in five years from now, we're going to say, sorry, you got to go? To me, that's not business friendly. And if the residents support it, I, that's just why, I think it would be a nightmare to try and do a revenue cost share analysis and pull businesses in. There's no stability for a business to open up here.
We wouldn't know if it was resident driven or patron driven from other communities, for one, so it's not necessarily that it's our residents supporting it.
Fair.
Two, maybe there is a safeguard built in that you can exceed by a certain percentage. But if you're at 90% revenue recognition from gaming and 10% from your food and beverage, that was not the, the essence or spirit of why we allowed this G1 to be put in, into concept and creation and implementation. Right? So maybe there's a way to say, fine, you know what, if you do end up having 80% or 65% from gaming and 35% is your food and beverage composition now as a result, congratulations on making greater revenues for your business, but I don't want to see it turning into just video gaming. I don't, I mean, I don't know.
And I was going to say, I know we can go circle on circle on this, I think it's an administrative nightmare and a disincentive for businesses to come in, so, but I mean, that's just how I'll stand on it. I don't want to belabor.
I guess the point is is that we're not asking them to close their business, we're, we're saying that you, you won't be able to renew your gaming license. So if they're a restaurant, there's, there's nothing that says that they, that they have to have gaming to be a restaurant, just have to be a restaurant to get gaming.
And we're making that definition of restaurant based on sales.
Correct, but, but they're telling us they're a restaurant. So I mean, if you're in the restaurant business, we're not saying that you can't be in the restaurant business anymore. We're saying that you can't be in the gaming business anymore.
Can I throw something out? And again, grandfathered the six, but plus the three hopefully, but no, that's a different discussion. But the new business, and again, most licenses that they have are between five and seven with the gaming. Um, and again, as Mayor Gallo, you would put in a fluctuation rate, um, you know, maybe we say something and then you're allowed that, but maybe that one gets, the first year if they didn't get it, um, they're put on notice and then they get another G1 for the next year. So you have a little period of time to make it and make their decision, but um, again, they have a commitment on their, whoever their gaming group is, five to eight years, depending what they sign. Would that make you more comfortable? Again, economically, I don't want to see people come and go. Um, but at the same point in time, would that be a comfort level that if they provide how long they would be there, plus putting them on notice, then they would have a period of time? Um, I don't know, but I'm just putting it out there as.
Alderman Beliziano and Alderman O'Brien.
I, I would be okay with that, but I would not be okay with giving them another year. I would be okay giving them a temporary, however you want to word it, be that the gaming, um, laws allow us, giving them a temporary gaming license of an additional three months or six months to show improvement in their numbers and, you know, bring it again towards council to review again. But to say, okay, you didn't do it the first year, but now we're going to give you another year, to me is, is asking a lot.
Okay. Further comments on, on that, or should we move on to defining what happens for existing businesses, should they want to pursue a G1? Specifically hotels, um, cigar lounges, banquet halls, should we look at this now? I think we, we have some, some, some mechanisms for new business, which is distance and density. Um, we have some, you know, further caveats within there. And then, um, we've kind of identified that the primary mover in the equation is the business's primary revenue driver should still exceed the gaming revenue and should it not by a given amount that can be put on notice. And I think that qualifies. As far as putting a hood in, I think if, if the business has to go into an eight-year contract with the terminal operator, um, I think the hood is just compounding investment that now we're making it additionally hard on businesses to a certain degree, um, to, to add an additional layer of financial investment or potential burden when you're strapped for cash as a startup. But I don't know.
I guess my only question to that then is why that everybody's come before now has been required.
They weren't required.
My understanding, Mayor Gallo, from talking to them is before we would issue a permit or occupancy and talking to the three or four that are in flux, we required, and I'm not going to say names because I'm not that type of guy and throw somebody in the bus, we as the city of Rolling Meadows had to see, we can, I, I mean, I'm sure you've talked to them too. They've said they had to have a hood before, we'll give them anything. So what leg do we have to stand on now if we pass this, that we require them when it's not in the writing?
So one, we didn't require, right? Two, there's, there's personal accountability, ownership and due diligence in being familiar with an ordinance. And three, the follow-up question in any event that you're, you're ever in as an individual, a body is, is this a requirement or a recommendation? And you ask that throughout life in general, all the time. And so if somebody doesn't do their homework and read the rules before they play the game, that's kind of on them. But it was never a mandate, never mandated. The ordinance didn't mandate.
Can we get clarification on that? I know Mr. Wenzel's here and Barry's here. These guys I've talked to for the new establishments coming up, the ones in, did we not require it before we gave them the occupancy or the permit to move forward? We had to see it on the plans.
We had to see it on the plans.
It's right here. We had to require it, that's why I looked to council like we did before, and Alderman Budmats brought it up. What leg do we have to stand on? Not that anybody that's in the flow is going to come back after us and say, you made me do this and it's not here, because I understand. But we have two of our experts here involved in this process that said it was required before they issued anything.
And they're speaking out of class because it's not required. It's not required.
We're going to go round and round on this. Intent required or not, it was, it was needed to be done, otherwise we weren't going to give them their occupancy or let them move forward.
So if there is a law and the written wording in the law states something and the expectation is something else, you go by what's in writing?
I don't disagree, but it appears like our city trumped that and said it was required before they would let them move forward. So shame on us if that's the case, but the ones that are in now or in flight, if you go by and look in the windows as they're specking it out and roughing it out, it's a hood. Because we required it, these two gentlemen just told us that.
Alderman Budmats.
If I may, the reason why we required it is because we wanted restaurants and we were using that as the mechanism that it to our, into our way of thinking, made it a restaurant because they were willing to invest and have a hood. Obviously, there are people who are willing to invest and have a hood and not utilize it to the fullest degree just so they can get the gaming. And, and so the fact that the prior administration, because there haven't been any, under this administration, under the prior administration, the prior liquor commissioner, because he saw it fit to make sure that people really demonstrated that they wanted to be a restaurant and he wanted to see that they had a hood and that they were a restaurant and that they weren't in quote unquote, a gaming cafe. Yes, that's what he used as his rationale for doing that. And, and we as a group now are trying to make sure that we don't have gaming cafes. So if we're just going to say, if we're going to make it all about the hood, it didn't work.
And we're going to just say sorry to the people that invested 30 or 40 grand because our staff said you had to do it?
No, I think what has been stated is everybody who's here, they're grandfathered.
And not only that, they came here saying, I want to be a restaurant. And we were looking for restaurants. And so they said we're a restaurant, we wanted a restaurant, restaurants have hoods. It's just that plain and simple.
So just as clarification, again, everybody who's here, the six that are operating in, I would ask at a later date, the three that are in process and potentially another one, but six plus three, they would be grandfathered or whenever we created the ordinance, what it is. But the six, I could tell you, that's what I've heard around the table as a summary is that they're in, it's everything new that we're now talking about. And that's going back to, so typically, and not putting words into a city attorney, but even as staff, typically if we start a new ordinance, it says, any new G1 coming into the city as of, and it uses a date, that would be for those new businesses. Somehow we would have to be creative about hopefully the three and anything else, but the six that are in place would either be called out saying that these, or they would actually be stated if you were in existence before this with your G1, you were being, so they're not in play. Everything that we're talking about is new and discussed. Um, I think that's the summary that I have to try to keep things going along.
Yeah. Alderman Passessi and then Alderman Budmats.
Okay, along with Barry's thought here, first off, I agree, the six that are here, they should be grandfathered. I'm not as familiar with, only one in process that I'm familiar with is the Bigsby's, but.
I'm not even calling them Bigsby's in process because.
So they're not even one of the three.
Yeah.
So I'm, what I'm trying to figure out, they're in process, but are they, how far into the process? Because I'd be willing to grandfather them as well.
Embryonic, embryonic.
So basically they put some paperwork in and nothing's been done.
Yeah.
There's a couple roughed out.
So of the three that are in process, they've already been roughed out?
Uh, the other one, it could open up in less than 30 days. They're really close to finishing up. The other one is roughed out, um, the third one is still sitting downstairs. And then, I'm not counting number four behind me, I'm just talking about what's in.
And are these restaurants?
They have, their menus that they have shown us have the hood and our full menus. One is, um, American bar food with a euros, another one is more of a breakfast slash lunch kind of feel. The third one that is downstairs is more of a burger, um, location, they were also talking about some pizza. So if you're asking me, one I guess could be Greek-American, one could be breakfast, which is I guess American if you want to call it that. And the third one is American Grill at this point in time.
So if they're all, then they're all applying for restaurant licenses at this point?
When they are ready to open, yes. And one of the ones that's ready to open, we've already given them an A2 liquor license.
I guess this might be a question for council. So we are saying if it moves forward, these ones are grandfathered. Is that grandfathered from the revenue share?
That's.
So, because how could we, like, what are we grandfathering them from if this were to move forward?
What I am saying with grandfathered, my understanding, not putting words into anybody, is that they're grandfathered by any of these new rules that we're talking about, the new establishments that come in are what we're talking about.
That's even, that's even another concern of Pandora's boxes, I would just want everybody to play on the same playing field. Then everybody knows the rules they're playing from. If we're grandfathering some from this and some from a hood and some from, just make it a level playing field if they want to come do business here.
Alderman Budmats is waiting to speak after, but Alderman Passessi.
My apologies.
If they haven't been issued a G1 license, they haven't been issued a G1 license, it's a privilege, it's not a right. And so whatever we decide to make, the rules and regulations for being granted a G1 license is what it is. And if they were a business who's a restaurant and they wanted to open up a restaurant in Rolling Meadows, they're very welcome here. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're entitled to have gaming at their restaurant.
Alderman Beliziano.
Um, just a thought that just popped in my head when you said that, a new business coming into town that's a restaurant, what does council think of a new business having a waiting period before they would be allowed their G1 license?
That's what my prospect did in.
I, I just thought I had read that somewhere, but I couldn't remember where.
Sean Burden did it.
Crystal Lake did it for a year.
Yep.
One year wait.
Okay.
So is that a consideration here to incorporate a waiting period for new establishments?
Yeah.
Do we want to put a, uh, Do we want to put a timeframe around that? Six months, 12 months, 18 months?
I think a year is good enough.
I like that.
I would...
I was just going to ask if we could do a straw vote on the, on the time period? Because everyone's looking at each other. Can we, can we say it?
Well, we can start with a 12-month and then take a straw vote on that? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, or if someone, I would guess my first straw vote request would be for greater than 12 months, if anyone wants greater than 12 months.
Okay, so then...
Alderman Busessi.
Could I ask that we hold that for a minute and maybe ask when we open to comments from the audience and get the couple owners of businesses that own restaurants to give us an idea of how long do they think that we would be able to profit, be able to see that they're a true business of a restaurant?
Very well.
Because I don't have knowledge in this business of knowing that, to know if three months, six months, a year is reasonable.
You can open it up for them to, if they sign, but...
Alderman Busessi.
I mean, realistically, if you're opening up a restaurant, it might take five years before you're turning a profit.
Right.
Right? And how are we measuring, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong words. We wouldn't necessarily look at profits, we're looking at revenues, right?
Manager Crumsock.
So not being in that business too, but I know that you were in the business, but typically, one to two years is what a restaurant is going to run. And if they don't make it by that second year, they're pulling out. That's my understanding, that's everything that I've seen and actually some other stuff that I've read. And obviously, not putting you on the spot, but I think that's even for bars, that typically one to two years. And if you can't make it by that second year, you're folding.
Okay, so a straw vote on 12-month waiting period?
After the comment period. Yes, please.
Okay. All right, further discussion or should we open this up to the signing sheet?
I do have some clarification then. So would this waiting period be in conjunction with the revenue split or is this to replace the revenue split?
Alderman Busessi.
This, for me, would just be for brand-new licenses, that they would have that waiting period. The revenue split is for anyone that has the G1 license.
For maintaining the G1.
Maintaining the G1.
Once opened.
Once opened.
So that'd be for new and existing? I'm sorry, I spoke out of turn, apologize.
Alderman Busessi.
So to clarify then, the revenue split would be for everyone that currently has the G1 license and all new, and all new establishments going forward?
I wanted to call him, sorry. I thought that we would just, that would be grandfathered, is that this revenue stuff would not apply to the current ones. That's why I was asking what we were going to, what people are being grandfathered from. And that's probably for our discussion here.
I find the whole thing then nonsensical because there's a chance that the, that those that are in the hopper are also video game cafes, where their revenues are going to be greater. So this is honestly, you know, an hour and 28 minutes' worth of wasted time on this. If that's, if that's the case, if we're just going to grandfather all these.
That's what I'm asking.
I would like to do a little bit of research on this because our, as our ordinance stands right now, there is an A3 license that allowed, that was linked to the G1. And the A3 license specifically states it's not operated as a restaurant, but may serve light food. So I'd have to do a little bit of analysis as to those existing right now and whether they have that A3 license currently and how not grandfathering in may legally impact the city.
Okay. Alderman Busessi.
I would just then want to also clarify that when we're talking about food and beverage tax, even if you're a restaurant, most of your revenues are going to be coming from booze. So if it's, if it's an A3 and they're getting most of the revenue from alcohol, alcoholic beverages, it would, I feel like that would be the same for both A1 and A2 as well, and city staff can speak to that.
So I have not looked at every establishment, so I do not know how they're broken down by our A1s, A2s, and how much is liquor and how much is food. So we can get you more of that, but that's going to be more staff time on that one if the council wants to look at that. But the breakdown should be on the form.
Continue.
The reason that I am bringing that up is to say, if our city attorney is going to look into the difference between our A1, A2, A3, and D, then I guess I'm coming from the point where I wouldn't necessarily differentiate them, whether it's a bar or a restaurant. It's gambling versus other, other food or beverage, or combined food and beverage, if you're the full restaurant.
Alderman Busessi.
Okay, so this, we've an hour and a half into it, we're kind of back to the original question. Are we, are we wanting to grant G1 licenses only to, let's call them, restaurants that sell food as their primary business? Or do we want them, do we want, would there be a case where we would want to grant a G1 license to a place where, let's say, 90% of their revenue is alcohol? It's a bar? So that would be the question I would put out there. If we're comfortable with, with any bar being here and let's say the revenue from their alcohol is over 50%, if we're comfortable with every bar having gaming, then leave the A3 in there. If not, I think the first thing we could do is just take the A3 out. Because that's pretty much the difference between just a bar with light food and...
A restaurant.
And a restaurant, is what I'm hearing, so.
Alderman Busessi.
I don't understand why we can't just do that quickly.
I don't think there's a problem with having a bar with, with gaming as supplemental revenue, so, but that's, that's my feelings on it.
Alderman Busessi.
I said this the other night, I'd much rather have slot machines in a bar than in a restaurant, that my kids can visually see the slot machines. And I would think that most parents would feel the same way taking their kids to a restaurant. So to say that slot machines don't belong in a bar is kind of silly to me on that thought process, because that's, it's adults, that's where they belong, is in a bar. Slot machines are for adults.
Thank you. Further comments or discussion on this before opening the floor to signatures on the signing sheet?
One last thing, I'll be very brief. The main reason I bring up about eliminating the A3 is because the original, from what I've been told, the original intent of this was for restaurants. If the original intent, if our intent going forward is that it's not about restaurants, because I don't consider the bar as a restaurant that sells food. So I think of restaurants as places where you go and you have a meal. But my two cents.
Thank you. First name on the signing sheet is Dave Peterson.
Will you be speaking together? Frank?
Oh, that's right.
So we, we still will limit this to 20 minutes for public conversation.
Okay.
And we do want to adhere to no profanity.
Okay.
And no direct conversation among individuals. Call out your questions or comments to the chair, and the chair will allow conversation to occur after you're done presenting. Question and answer will be available for time for council to speak with you.
Okay. So listening to all the conversations, come back and forth, a lot of dynamics, a lot of different points of view, I think if we went back way before gaming and John Doe was going to open up a restaurant, he had to operate the business in a profitable way to keep his doors open. If another restaurant opened up next door and his restaurant sales went down because the other restaurant opened and he raised his prices because business went down, he'd be slicing his own throat because no one's going to go there. So the idea of raising prices because business went down kind of isn't in the true spirit of trying to keep your doors open for business. So I think that anybody who's going to open up a business or a restaurant has done their, their due diligence and said, "Hey, this is what we need to do to operate as a thriving food and beverage establishment." Enter gaming and in the true essence and spirit of what the state of Illinois wanted gaming for was to help a struggling industry. Restaurants and bars were both in there. The gaming cafes found a little loophole and they got in and was never part of, from what I've heard, what the state wanted to have here. Needless to say, they're here and they fill a niche that's happening across the state, the gaming cafes too. We, we have spoken to everybody here separately and we've, you know, stated several times that we are a food and beverage-driven establishment that there's no hiding it. A hood doesn't make us any more than what we are. We have food and beverage sales that we've had for years and there's proof inside the office downstairs that shows what we pay in food and beverage tax. But we've done it without a hood. There's no, there's no reason to look at us and say, "You guys should have a hood." I understand that other establishments had to do it and I, I don't want to comment on that, but at the end of the day, we are functioning and operating, we have kitchen staff, we have bar staff. You can come into our establishment, you can sit down at a table, you can receive beverages, you can receive food, and you can pay at the end of your meal. We are a restaurant, exactly what you would expect anywhere else that you would go. That being said, I would hope that we're in full support of whatever you guys have to do with the ordinance to protect the future of what's happening. And like I had said earlier when I was sitting there, Crystal Lake did a one-year waiting period. So if you open up a restaurant, if you were going into the town for gaming being your primary source of revenue, you're going to pick a different town other than Crystal Lake. If you're a restaurant and you want to open up a burger house or a fried chicken place or whatever it is you're going to open up, a hot dog stand, you're going in with your primary source of revenue intention being food. When the gaming comes, it's going to supplement your income, which was the true essence and spirit of why the state of Illinois put that in place. It's to supplement the income of a struggling industry. The numbers are all public knowledge for what we do in gaming or what we would eventually do. Any of the establishments in Rolling Meadows that have gaming, any one of us can go on the website and see what the, what they've done. So while you guys are doing this, the only thing I would ask is, we are applied right now, and I would hope by now everybody would realize that we're not here for, we didn't open up five years ago thinking that gaming was going to put us, keep us here. We opened up five years ago because there's a craft beer niche and it's a huge thing. And we have our craft beer, which is what we are, we're a poorhouse. And we offer food and we offer a nice menu and, like we said earlier, we want to enhance our menu with some other additional things and, and keep going the way we are. But we'd love to have the supplement and come along the way. If there's a way for us to, while you guys are still in the process of doing this, let us go through on, on the current ordinance, the way it sits, and see that we're a restaurant. We're not just a cafe, we're not a wolf in sheep's clothing coming in here and saying, "Hey." And I agree that if you guys had mechanisms in place to prevent it, the wolf is not going to come here. If you said there's a one-year waiting period, guess what? Go to Crystal Lake. How many cafes do they have in Crystal Lake? They make a, they make a choice and say, "Hey, this is not for us, we're going to go somewhere else where we can do it." So I'm taking, peeking my notes here really fast. I think, I think that's all I have to say. Yeah, so thank you, and we always appreciate all your time and consideration for us. So I'll hand it off to Frank.
I'm comfortable now.
I'm freezing.
Air conditioning works.
We're going over here. Jennifer gets hot, I get cold, or vice versa.
Sir, can you state your name for me?
Frank Guima, G-U-M-A.
Thank you.
I'm going to come at you from a little different angle here. I've been in the amusement game business for about 42, 43 years. And this, the Video Gaming Act that got passed in 2009 was through the efforts of a state association of companies like mine. We had first discovered this out in Oregon, it was run by the Oregon State Lottery as an association, a group of companies like mine. We had all gotten together and initially went to the Illinois State Lottery to try and get them to allow us to do this. So this started in 1989, okay? So that's how long we've been working on this. The Video Gaming Act that got passed in 2009 is essentially legislation that we had written up by attorneys that we had hired as an industry. So I'm pretty involved in the gaming business, all right? Understand it well and I understand the legislation. And when the law got passed in 2009, the governor at that point offered an opt-out clause and a lot of municipalities had opted out back then. The main reason they opted out is they were unfamiliar with it and they didn't know what to expect. So for probably four years, we went to different municipalities that had opted out to try and convince them to come back in. And over time, we've been able to do that. And David brought up a good point. When the law first got passed, it was passed for liquor pouring establishments, okay? So you had to have a liquor license to be able to have gaming. Now, at the last minute, truck stops got thrown in, all right? Truck stops are the only establishments that are not required to serve liquor. And then they established some criteria for truck stops. So, and I won't bore you with all those details, but what's, what's happened is we're in a situation as an industry where people have found loopholes and they're taking advantage of them. Gas stations, convenience stores, laundromats, you know, whatever. They're at a point where the municipalities are giving them liquor pouring licenses, which allows them to have gambling, okay? So, I mean, at the end of the day, you folks control the liquor licenses and it's really what it boils down to. So you have to have a liquor pouring license, you have to be able to serve it, in order to get a gaming license, okay? At the same time, you can have your own gaming license, which is, you know, the direction you're headed in. And, you know, everybody's had a lot of good comments tonight. You know, I've heard these comments over and over for the last several years. Like it or not, you've got some gaming cafes in town. They're already here. And if you put, if you were to put something in place that said, you know, 50% of their revenue has to come from food, they're never going to make it. It's not going to happen, okay? And gaming cafes have a place in the market. So their demographic typically is female, age 38 to about 65. And the reason women like to go there is because they don't like a bar environment. So they're more comfortable in that type of an environment. So they have a place in the market. And really, what most municipalities are doing is they're trying to limit how many gaming cafes, you know, go into their own local municipality. So, you know, I'd almost rather see you guys look in that direction as far as limiting the number. And, you know, it's, again, it's up to you. There is a number that works and it's one you have to come up with. But for, you know, my own personal opinion, to have you guys start drilling down and looking at everybody's revenue, excuse me, just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Somebody else brought up waiting periods. St. Charles had a one-year waiting period. Crystal Lake, you know, was discussed. Schaumburg is not going to allow gaming cafes until 2022, or 21 or 22?
22.
Or 22 if you're a resident. Or 22 if you're a resident, or 21 if you're a resident, 2021. And if you're a non-resident, 2022. So, you know, there's another approach. You know, so what they're doing is they're giving their local residents and local businesses an opportunity to be involved in the gaming before they let, you know, somebody from outside the area come in. So, again, it's just another way to look at it. Grocery stores, you know, but again, the original intent of the law was to not allow gaming in grocery stores. And I'll tell you right now that there's a Caputos that has a bar and restaurant in it that has gaming. Okay, so, but, you know, again, the municipality was okay with it. It's a separate area and it's...
Is it Ram Lake?
Carol Stream, yeah. And you may see more of that going forward. You know, business concepts change, you know, as we move through life. And Caputos and Marianos, you know, they're bigger and larger facilities, they're, you know, they're offering food and dining and alcohol. So just wanted to point some of those things out. I'm very familiar with the gaming laws. If you have any questions that I can answer, I'd be glad to do it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Further comments, questions? Alderman, O'Brien.
Mr. Guma, can I ask you, based on your experience in Schaumburg allowing actual gaming cafes in 2021, 22, from all of your vast knowledge, what is the definition? Since it's not on the Illinois Gaming Board, but we'll look to you as a subject matter expert, how do they break that down? Because I'm with you, I think it's too much minutia to look at the revenue streams. But so how does Mount Prospect, I think you meant, I'm sorry, Schaumburg, Mount Prospect and Crystal Lake has the one-year waiting period? What defines a gaming cafe? Because it's not in the state law from what I can see.
There is no definition. As an industry, we have our own definition.
Right.
And our definition as an industry is typically a facility that is roughly around 2,000 square feet, serves little or no food at all. And most gaming cafes, even their alcohol revenue is very, very, very little.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, and not a lot of alcohol consumed in them.
Okay. But nothing to the point of revenue sharing?
Nope.
Okay. Or revenue split, sharing's the wrong word.
Nope, not at all.
All right. I was just wondering from your experience, that helps me understand that what a gaming cafe is, there's not a definition.
In your experience of gaming cafes gone through the expense of installing a hood to meet a municipality's requirements, only not to use it, as you say, very limited food sales, in order to just get their gaming cafe open so that they can sell their product?
Some have. Yeah, yeah. Just to be able to open their doors. And then they basically shut them down. I mean, shut the hoods down, I'm sorry, not the business. Yeah, yeah.
Further comments for the speaker at the podium?
Let's go to the speaker first.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so to put a bow on this now, is there further comments or discussion on these items or do we think we have enough for council to come back and assist with drafting initial pass at an ordinance to both address new business and then existing businesses that may request G1 ordinance in the future?
Yes.
I think we do and I think just to summarize if I can, what I have in my minutes to bring back to October 15th is that going back to the September 17th item, this would be two on the bottom of the sheet. We did talk about three in an area, that we also talked about the distance. We had A, B, and C, D. The only thing that we did not finish up on D was hotel restaurants. Still on the table at this point in time would be a one-year waiting period. Staff has a little homework to do, but there was some discussion about all new hoods in the new ordinance and there was really no definitive, but at the same point in time, if there's a percentage, or did the one-year waiting period do away with the percentage?
I think the one-year waiting period would cancel out. But I would want to hear council's opinion.
I would agree.
Do a straw vote on that.
But those are my quick summaries of everything that we have.
Alderman, Budmatz?
Perhaps we could ask one more question. In those municipalities that had a one-year waiting period, were some of the gaming cafes willing to operate at a loss for a year or at limited profit in order to, just like purchasing a hood and not using it? Were they willing to wait out the storm for a year only so they could have their gaming cafe open after a year?
To the best of my knowledge, there's only probably been less than a handful that have done that or tried to do it.
Dottie's did it in Roselle. Roselle has a one-year waiting period and Dottie's paid the rent for an entire year and staffed somebody there, the business had to be open. They paid somebody to sit in the building, buy machines and, like Frank had said, very limited food, very limited liquor options. And they paid the one year and then they brought the machines in.
Thank you. Manager, Crumstock?
That's the only organization or municipality that I was ever told about that one of the groups that I say really does coffee and limited, limited, actually did that. Our neighbors, obviously to the left of us, no one has taken up to do that. Other municipalities that opened up with a requirement, no one else tried doing that. In my experience now going through this, there's probably only two, what I'm calling cafes, who would actually even have the resources to actually hold out for a year and then come back online. And those are big organizations. And Dottie's was part of a group that took them over, that's why they could do that.
Alderman, Sineka?
So then looking to our original questions about if we want to protect anyone in the city from this type of behavior, is this something that we're okay with having? That what I mean is, are we okay with having someone who has those kinds of resources to wait out for a year and not really do business in order to be able to gamble in the city? And this is a question for staff, I mean, not staff, I'm sorry, for us as a council.
Alderman, Bessisi?
I think regardless of what we do, there's always going to be somebody who's going to try and find a way to get around it. I think the task is to try and minimize it. So, I mean, it sounds like, you know, a year, in my book, I like the one year better than any type of looking at people's revenue. To some of the other points that were made of it being a privilege, not a right, in the first place, there's nothing that says we have to give it to them in the first place after the year. There's nothing that says we can't take it away from them. So I, it's kind of my comments on that. I think there's always going to be a company that's big enough to get around anything by throwing money at it if they really want to. And really, how much money do you want to throw out to get five or six machines worth of revenue? I mean, I don't know what five or six machines worth of revenue would be, but...
It depends on the location. From $6,000 to $60,000 a month in revenues.
Location, location, location.
So it's very subjective based on geography.
We've not talked about signage.
Thank you.
Some of the key points that were hit on previous months and years ago, yeah. So let's go ahead and start that conversation if you'd like.
So based on your earlier reading, and I didn't take the time, but I'm glad you did, the outdoor signage, which is already out there, which says slots and big, really nice waving banners, those are not allowed?
So...
Manager, Crumstock?
The current area that has the banners currently, they have a 30-day temporary for those. That's what's existing right now. So typically what happens when a business comes to community development, they fill out a temporary signage. That's why you see the flags out there. And flags were used at Anna's Red Apple, Isabella's, right now at Daisy's, but they have been used and they do fill out a temporary signage.
And that's in our ordinance that allows it?
Yes, it does.
Complying zoning.
Alderman, Beniziano?
My rebuttal to that would be our ordinance says 10% of existing signage. I would question, how do those large signs equal 10% of their current signage?
Of the window.
Of the window.
Window signage is what that...
Or doors.
Or doors.
Glass, panes of glass.
So my proposal would be in the new ordinance, that absolutely no signage. And I was corrected the last time, in the parkway. That would be my proposal.
Alderman, Bessisi and Alderman, O'Brien?
Okay, something that maybe Mr. Budmatz might not be aware of, yes, they can apply for a temporary, the temporary signage. But I believe, and Mr. Crumstock might be able to assist here, I believe, I know with the Planning and Zoning Committee, we went through discussions regarding how many times and people can apply for a temporary signage. And I believe what we did is we put restrictions on it so that they could, they can get a temporary sign, but they can only get so many per year.
That is correct.
It's very, it's a very small number, if I remember right. It was only a limited number of days, I don't remember what it was.
You are correct, but on the top of my head, I don't remember. I know that Don's sitting behind me, but I don't know if he has that on the top of his head, but there was a restriction how many times you could do it in an annual year.
Yeah, because we were even restricting community church. I'm putting up temporary signs for Corn Fest. So, I mean, this thing is very restrictive as far as the temporary signs.
But obviously we could, obviously we could take and restrict it further for gaming advertising. I'm seeing if we considered that less tasteful than Corn Fest.
No pun intended.
I was just trying to, in case you didn't know that we had that.
So that was my concern is can we, and I'll look to council, can we say, oh, we'll allow it for car dealers and new massage places and new restaurants, but if you've got a game, we're not going to let you put a 30-day sign outside. I think that's probably walking in almost dark gray instead of gray area.
We do have to be careful about content-based restrictions on signage. You want to do your best to keep like a time, place, and manner restriction on signage. So for instance, if no signage in parkways, that's a manner restriction or a place, location restriction, that's okay. But if we start getting into content, we have to, we have to be careful about the First Amendment implications of that.
Alderman, Beniziano?
Then I would say just from residents that drive continuously down Kirchhoff and I've gotten several phone calls and emails that they absolutely dislike the signage that they see is that it be parkway and I'm going to ask the other councilmen to help me here, other things that we can think of, parkway sidewalks. I mean, I'm personally okay if they want to put it in their window. That's fine with me, but I don't know what other ways we could besides a sidewalk in a parkway.
Just to confirm too, like, they're currently in compliance. Anywhere that, my understanding is anywhere that's got the sign out now is within that 30-day window. So currently, everybody's in compliance, it's just if we adjust that going forward.
That is correct.
Okay.
So further recommendations to adjust the signage or just what Alderman Beniziano has requested about location of the parkway?
No, I was going to say, some on the windows. I think that as long as it's enforceable, I'm okay with that. And the parkway, I'm okay too, because I think we get way into sticky situation if we start doing it based on material or content.
So are you...
I'm believing it's a 30-day exception process now, regardless if it's a new car. I know we looked at like a new car sales place in Algonquin, they could get 30 days.
I'm going to go ahead and take a quick straw vote on that from council to see what the general sentiment is. So with a quick show of hands, those in favor of putting up limitations on posting sign ways in parkways, those in favor of, against? Sorry?
And sidewalks.
And sidewalks.
Thank you.
If you are against putting signage in parkways and sidewalks, those in favor of being against? It's kind of silly, like, one, two, three. Those opposed to that, two. So as of now, it stands to pursue that as an option. Maybe at the council meeting when it's brought up, you can pose an amendment.
And just for clarification, that's for gaming establishments?
Yes.
This specific subject that we're discussing tonight.
Okay, so would, this is more for council, would if we said it was for no temporary signage in parkways for gaming places, but anybody else can do it? Is there any, potentially any legal ramifications of that?
I mean, I'll look...
I mean, the bagel place can't put, the bagel place can put up their, some really ugly crappy sign that, you know, regarding they got special...
We're essentially stating then that anyone with a G1 license cannot advertise in the parkway or the sidewalk, whether it's advertising for their food, beverages, or gaming either. We have to be very careful not to...
Has to be everything that they do. They can't put a sign up.
Right.
Even if they're trying to grow their food business.
Alderman, Sineka, you have your hand up.
The only resident feedback that I have had on this issue has been regarding the signage. So for me, this is, this would be a clear desire of my residents to limit the signage from these establishments if they have gaming.
And I would want to look into other, if they've got other protections and if targeting that one industry has any implications on any equal protection rights or other things like that.
That will come back October 15th. Okay.
Barry.
Done.
No, we're just talking about the flags.
Then drive down Kirchhoff.
Kirchhoff right now, you have to stop one.
I have...
Can we confirm where the parkway is? From what I'm hearing, for those that may be viewing at home or for later dates is that the current discussion is that there are currently no signs in the parkways at this time. Alderman, O'Brien?
For clarification, can we get a definition of not being silly, but a right-of-way versus a parkway?
Sir, can you come to the podium and speak in the microphone?
It will help us from an educational perspective. If we do get calls from them, we can say, well, it's to this side of the sidewalk, but it's to that side of the sidewalk. So really, is there a basic difference?
There is a difference. We, there is a difference. So on Kirchhoff Road as an example, there's a 100-foot right-of-way. But the parkway may only be five feet because of the width of the road and the width of the bike path. So with temporary signage and you also have temporary signage currently up at the Marathon Station, they are on their side of the sidewalk outside of the right-of-way.
So that is, as long as they're on whichever side of the sidewalk, that's...
Essentially, if there's a sidewalk and they are on the business side of the sidewalk, that's where they are allowed. We don't allow, the only signs that are allowed in our parkways are garage sales and those are on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel.
Thank you.
Alderman, Sineka, you have your hand up.
Yes, I still have a question for...
Mr. Wenzel?
Yes, please, sorry. And I can submit these two pictures to, for the record, and I will show our podium guest here these two. And could you explain if this example, I have one that's next to the Pizza Hut sign, right? And I'm going to show this to you.
Sure.
You got your glasses on?
Yeah.
Be out there, what?
It's in, well... Right, that's not in the parkway.
And what is this one?
That's right-of-way that you just did.
This is right-of-way?
This is, okay, so here's the bike path, it's on the business side of the bike path.
For the record after this, I'm going to submit this as photo one and then for photo two...
It's definitely private property. That is, that's up by the building, that is private property. And that's, that's what they were told, is that the signs have to be outside of city property.
Okay. I have photo two, which is a slot flag that is on a green jut from the Pizza Hut corner over on Kirchhoff and by the Northwest Community Hospital outpatient care building.
And though those are acceptable, they're still found distasteful by residents? So you're saying you've heard from residents?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Manager, Crumstock?
Obviously, so we have some research that we'll be bringing back October 15th. Obviously, so we have some research that we'll be bringing back October 15th on signs. The only other clarification that it would say is, and I heard it, but no definitive, the, if we do the limitation, if it's allowed, does the 10% go up? I know that people said just put it on their windows, but that's my question.
It's a question for council to make a determination. Okay, so we can put a quick straw vote, but I think I already know the answer, which is no.
I think I'm hearing her.
Can you read that one more time, sorry?
So the question is, if we remove the signage, exterior signage, then does the percentage that covers panes of glass, windows, doors increase? And so with that, the question of allowing an increase to the pane of glass by the removal of exterior signage, is anyone in favor of that? Those opposed to that? Okay, it's unanimous to be opposed to that, they're opposed to increasing the signage on the windows and doors.
Question? For council, perhaps, obviously, it wouldn't be illegal for a business to advertise the name of their business, whether it's Daisy's, or Grande Jake's, or whatever, but I'm assuming the business, the name of their business isn't slots, or isn't poker, or whatever. And so gaming symbols and gaming name slots, because that's not part of the name of their business, et cetera. Is there, is there an opportunity for us to explore gaming acronyms, if you will, limiting those versus, obviously, we want them to be able to advertise the name of their business?
I'll look into that, but even though they're not words, they still may be considered speech under the First Amendment, so I'll evaluate that, though.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
I was saying, do we get resolution, I know we talked about doing a straw vote for a one-year waiting period. I know Alderman Senoika asked if anybody was in favor of over a year, but I don't know that we ever closed that loop.
I think what I had for, again, the one-year waiting period did pass around here, but it did away with the revenue, so they both went together. We have to do some research. We did talk about the distance, and that's number two. There was one less part that's part of D, the hotel, restaurant, I don't have, I only have that, we have to ask the current hotels, but we did not get a resolution on that. And then the three in an area, a half-mile, was the other comment, but that's from my notes, and then we have some additional.
And some of these things, specifically hotels and banquets, you know, we can cross that bridge when we get there, if council so chooses, we haven't been approached by any yet. It's just something to consider in advance, so you have some premeditated thought behind it going forward.
And what about caps? Overall caps?
I would like to pose a straw vote on caps to, now are you talking cap to the G1 or to actual entities coming into the community, like gaming cafes, which do you want me to clarify here?
Basically, we've been told it's almost impossible to regulate against gaming cafes. I mean, one way or another, there's a loophole that somebody, if they want to, if they want to exploit it, they'll find a way. So I guess the answer is.
Capping the G1?
Capping the G1.
Okay.
May I ask you a question real quick?
Sure, before I put out the straw vote.
Real quick, I thought I heard the city manager mentioned that this was the same as the, is the G1 the same as the liquor license?
So currently, as they run, and they're just like liquor license, there are no caps. You open them up as you need them, you close them after someone. So what's being discussed right now for a cap, and I'm taking cafes out, but a cap would say, this is the total number of G1s that the city of Rolling Meadows will establish. Once that cap is established, let's use a hypothetical number, 15, whatever, it's open. So anybody knocking on the door, they made it through the one-year waiting period, they have all the things that we talked about, and there was the hood or anything else, they're entitled to it, and it's open.
That's where I was going, in that, so let's say we have a cap of, I'm just going to use the number 10, we have our 10 places, one of them goes belly up regardless, they're gone. The next guy that comes in that meets the requirement, regardless of who they are or what they do, they can get it. They don't even, it doesn't come to vote for the council, it just would be done.
Counsel, speak.
So I, I have a comment, but more of a question. Has this council or the city undertaken an analysis as to whether the use of a gaming cafe has been, is allowed in the zoning districts as a zoning matter? And if, if you are going to allow any gaming cafe type of use, you may want to consider that that's a zoning issue, and then you could cap that kind of a use. With the G1 license issue, the city's doing it the right way now by closing it completely, as opposed to establishing a higher number that would be capped. So the better way to do it for the city is to close it so that there, no one has any kind of sense of entitlement to that license.
And then explore geographically through zoning as the preferred route to minimize?
If you're going to allow that kind of a use.
So they would, so they would then have to petition for a special use or something?
Yes.
Via, going through that whole process? I just wanted to bring it up before we did the hole.
Only, yeah, I think that steps not going, you have to figure out a definition of what a cafe is, but I'm just putting it out there. I can be creative, but not that creative.
Alderman Senoika?
We have a definition out here, and we're defining it through revenues. That's what we've had three aldermen discuss today, that they were in favor of pursuing, and one that's very much against it.
Yeah, but that's also different from the running comment, so.
I would, I would like clarification on where the council stands at this point regarding the revenue requirement, or the revenue split requirement as a definition for a gaming cafe.
Okay, so how would you?
How would I, I would like to know if we would consider keeping Section C of maintaining a G1 in the original September 17th committee of the hole that we have, where we said maintaining a G1 as originally intended to help the city of Rolling Meadows dining establishments remain competitive with the state's approval in passing of video game gambling. In order to ensure the businesses operating in the city of Rolling Meadows that hold the G1 license are genuinely a restaurant, they must demonstrate by providing proof that the majority of the revenue is derived from a combination of the sale of food and beverage, and that revenue generated from the gaming machines does not make up a majority of that business's earnings. I would like to do a straw vote on whether the council wants to include this Part C going forward for staff.
So with a show of hands, the current council, please demonstrate their approval for continuing to leave this portion C in. That's three in favor, those opposed?
So now you've got two conflicting votes on here, one with the one-year waiting period doing away with it, and now we just put it back in.
So then clarification, that the revenue Part C would be for all restaurants, and then when, so then the other waiting period would be added to that Part A for a new restaurant coming into the city. We're looking for that waiting period of one year.
Again, that's different from what you voted on originally, which was one-year waiting period and no restrictions in C. Now you just said C, so it's different from what you originally stated and what was voted on.
Based on testimony from the speakers, we learned that it is equally viable to reduce the amount of potential video gaming cafes to come in by upholding a waiting period for distributing G1 license to that entity. And so it would mitigate the need to allow them to come in and open up, and then validate whether or not they were a gaming parlor or genuinely a restaurant. And that was for new, new restaurants or new establishments. If we don't think that that is currently accurate, to demonstrate that a gaming cafe will no longer come into the community, and again, they define the gaming parlor as a 2,000-square-foot enterprise with little to no food and little liquor sales. So we have a couple things. One, we have to define the gaming parlor or cafe if we want to produce some sort of zoning requirements. And then two, we did determine that we were going to use a waiting period of 12 months versus the use of judging revenues. And so.
Alderman O'Brien.
Are we done with questions of the experts?
We are.
Okay, because my concern is, I was going to ask the gentleman, is if, okay, if this goes through with the revenue share, which I thought we were away from.
It is.
The revenue share, we're back to just 12-month waiting period?
We've been told that by, we have been told, right, like, we've been told a lot of things, of course, through the course of this, but we've been told that if we were to utilize a waiting period, we would see fewer gaming parlors attempt to come into the community. That's not to say that there aren't some with deep enough pockets that will come in regardless if they find that the market is right for them with a sacrifice of 12 months or whatever duration.
So the straw poll we just took is like it never happened before?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question for clarification?
You're still making a cafe definition.
Yes.
So I have a question, just for clarification. We briefly discussed the council's position on bars with gaming devices, and I only heard two aldermen give their input as to whether they were okay with that or not. So this, this impacts the A3 license issue, so Alderman Senoika, I believe you said you were okay with it, Alderman Beniziano, you said you were okay with it as well, and I didn't hear from, I assumed Budmets was not okay with that, but I'd like to get a clarification.
Can you refresh our memory on the discussion? It's like, because we would be looking at alcohol sales compared to, we'd be comparing sales revenues again.
So A3 typically is for light food. We only have one A3 that we have, not picking on them, but they are sitting behind me. At least you wore the shirt this time, you know, I can't give you a hard time on that. But how they are classified when they came in, and again, the original owners, when they came in, was it was a bar, and that's why it was given the A3 with limited food. Obviously, with the new ownership that took over in 2018-ish, they have increased the food that's there, and they have cleaned up the place. But again, that's the only A3 establishment that we have, and they are a craft brew location. And just to put the ideas out there, too, we are actually, from their five-year anniversary for the organization, Bigsby, they did bring up a concept that you will see soon about growlers, so they can actually fill them, but they are the only A3 that sits, and that was from when they were established.
And their business license as identified and held with the city is listed as what?
It's A3 with, I think it's a craft beer, I would have to go look downstairs what is actually on the business license, but it does not say restaurant if I remember correctly.
Okay, thank you.
So if they're the only A3 presently in the city of Rolling Meadows, the whole city?
Yes, they are.
I have no problems, to answer your question, I have no problems with that particular establishment, but I can't make a generalization about all A3s because they're the only A3.
Okay, so the A3 license authorizes the retail sale of liquor on premises not operated as a restaurant. However, nothing shall be deemed to prohibit the licensee from offering light food service.
I understand, but their, their craft beer sales makes them a little bit different than, than previous A3s that I've owned.
Okay.
So.
Alderman.
Let's ask Mr. Budmets a quick question. So other A3s, would you be in favor of those A3s having?
I think it would be something that, I want to review on a case-by-case basis, which, which also is our privilege to do as a city council.
Alderman Beniziano.
A question, if we were to remove the A3 from the ordinance, we could not have the privilege to do that, correct?
That is correct.
If you were to remove the A3 from the ordinance now?
Yeah, they could not ask for a G1 because they would not comply with it.
Oh, correct.
To be even, to give us the opportunity to give them the privilege of the G1.
If you removed it, they would not be, they would not qualify for the G1.
Okay.
Further discussion? Alderman Beniziano.
Is there a large difference in whether it be fees or expense for a business, whether an A3 or an A2?
You're putting me on the spot here, because I don't have the sheet in front of me, but I do think that A3 is higher than an A2, but we can get you that information, too. So.
Okay, I was just wondering, mainly, mainly because, you know, if there's somebody who is currently in A3, maybe they could switch somehow, but I don't know.
But I will get you those rates.
Have we exhausted this topic for this evening?
I was saying, if it's getting back to percent that's revenue from beer or from food or anything, I am not for that.
No, that's off, that's off.
About the A3, but we were talking about a restriction from A3.
So are you okay, A3, having a gaming license?
As it's written now, no, I would want some of the modifications we've talked about to go into effect, yes.
Correct, but an establishment that operates not as a restaurant, but serves light food along with their liquor service.
I think it probably goes back to how do we define restaurant? Well, it does not operate as a restaurant, so it's the peanuts and the pretzels and beer. Is that correct? But it goes back to our whole intent of the G1 is to help restaurants, but this is saying it is not a restaurant. So that's where my concern is.
So what is your position?
The A3 saying it does not operate as a restaurant, and if we go back to square one, it was to help restaurants. So how can we say that we're in favor of that when in the definition itself, it's not operating as a restaurant?
They're serving food, sit-down dining food, right?
Right, but it's in conflict of what is stated here. They are operating not as a restaurant, and the ordinance that's proposed is for restaurants, and as we've talked about for the last almost three hours, the intent was to help restaurants. So we are contradicting ourselves.
To Alderman Budmets' point, that because there's only one A3 in the community, and it is our privilege to take it as a case-by-case basis, take this as a case-by-case basis, and with that said, where is your position?
It'll set a precedent, so I would be concerned about that. Is that somebody else is going to come in, to me, that gets more towards the gaming side then. We're talking about getting a definition for gaming cafe. If we make one exception, we're going to have to make for precedent if three or four more want to come in.
Existing establishments that we're talking about right now, not new business.
I was going to say, I mean, that's a concern. If we're making one exception, why wouldn't we make another exception down the road?
A new business coming in as a, a new A3 would fall under the category of a new entity, a new business coming in right now.
But if we allow for an A3, and I defer to council, if they're actually an A3, and we allow an A3 right now to have it, what would prohibit us from having to give that next one to the A3, even though they're a new establishment?
You wouldn't have a license available. You wouldn't have the number of licenses available.
If we put a cap on them, which I don't know.
No, no, no. They're not available.
It's open or closed?
It's closed. It's always closed until the city decides to open it for one location at a time, otherwise it's closed.
So just to clarify, a new business, an A3, a bar, microbrew.
Because there's some in the wind.
Growler location coming, they're going to be up and established for a whole year, then they're coming back to the city council, because they already have their A3, but when they come to the G1, it's the pleasure of the council to say yea or nay. Yeah, they might comply with this, but there's nothing open, so the privilege would say, no, there is no G1. So there is a mechanism to say no.
Alderman Beniziano.
In the intent of having that year in place, we can establish, is it just a bar? Do they have just peanuts and chips? What mechanism and what kind of business plan do they have in place at that point? We have that privilege of saying, no. We have that privilege of saying, no, we have no license to offer you at this point. If we exclude them, A3 from now to this point, we don't have that privilege.
So council, do you need his, uh, sentiment on this position, or no?
I, I'll-
Yeah, I'm still leaning toward, yeah.
I'll move forward, not, not making any change with respect to the A3. And I'll also, um, from what I'm hearing, not make any change to the requirement that the establishment must have at least one grill, gas or electric.
For new establishments?
For new establishments.
Correct.
So now that brings-
Or not new establishments, you mean from license application, from when we evaluate it going forward? Or for newly-built establishments?
Yeah, in my notes, I had that the hood was in there and the other grandfathered, so.
Okay.
Um, we'll work on it for clarification. The notes are starting to get big.
Nobody said it was gonna be easy.
Yeah. So it seems like we, I don't know, we still haven't gotten, I mean, if we're, cause I'm starting to get to the point where I'm thinking they don't need the hood. Because if we're gonna go with the A3s, um, most of that type of a business usually doesn't have the kitchen-
Infrastructure.
With the whole infrastructure and everything to do that.
Different infrastructure, correct.
So they, so to say there has to be a hood is kind of, you know, you're saying yes and no at the same time. Um, so I, I don't know, I, it's just-
We can allow you to grapple with that for time.
Yeah, I can do that until the 15th.
You know, we, we all have our burden to bear.
Thank you.
But right now, I will be adding the hood language.
Right, because that was what one or the other, um, items were. So, and it was also used to keep out.
And with all due respect, I think we've come to a natural conclusion here for this evening. And, uh, otherwise, we'll just talk in circles and change our mind again. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Alderman Veniziano. Thank you for the second meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys, for the conversation.